Okay, good morning, everyone. So it's Tuesday, May 20th. The time currently is nine thirty-four a.m. And Erica, can you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Henson.
Here.
Commissioner Pinter.
Here.
Commissioner Odorizil.
Here.
Commissioner Baca.
Here. If everyone can please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I look allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the civil, liberty and justice for all. Just need a motion to approve the agenda. Still moved.
Second.
Okay, the motion passes four to zero. All right, so good morning, everyone. Such a great morning. We have a packed house. So this morning, we're going to honor our Employee of the Season awards for the 2025 season. So these employees have all gone above and beyond to demonstrate outstanding service and dedication to the county and its residents. So first, we will start and announce with the Team of the Season winner, followed by the Employee of the Season category winners, finishing with introducing the overall Employee of the Season winner. And then we'll have all of them come down in front of the podium for a large group photo. The winners and their supervisors are here with us today, and they will have a chance to speak and read the nominations. So we'll go ahead and start off with the Team of the Season award. And we're joined this morning by several directors, including Brian Staley from Public Works, Amir Fakir from Facilities and Fleet Management, Byron Fanning from Parks and Open Space, Parks, Open Space and Cultural Arts. They are here along with their employees from the Snow and Ice team. Would you all please come down to the podium while I announce your award? It's not Brian Staley. As they make their way down, I'm going to continue with the remarks. The Team of the Season award recognizes project teams and their work groups who have successfully collaborated outside their normal routine work duties to accomplish a significant goal that positively impacted the workplace or the Adams County community. Brian Staley nominated this team by writing, "When the rest of us are warm in our beds," which we are, thank you so much, "they're out battling the elements. When roads vanish under a relentless blanket of snow, they bring them back to life. When the temperatures plummet, the wind howls and the world seems frozen in place, they push forward." The Adams County Snow and Ice team doesn't just respond to winter's worst, they conquer it. So this dedicated team of equipment operators and public servants stand on the front line of our community's safety, working through the dead of the night over long weekends in the harshest conditions imaginable. They face blizzards, black ice, and bone-chilling cold. Not for accolades, but because they know their work means someone gets home safely, emergency vehicles can reach those in need, and our roads remain open when it matters the most. For their sacrifice, their service, and their unwavering commitment to keeping us safe, we proudly nominate the Snow and Ice team for Winter Team of the Season. So today, we honor them for their service to our community. So I have the three directors here, Brian, Amir, and Byron. Would you and anyone from the Selfless team like to say a few words?
Absolutely. We've invited a number of our managers from the team to say a few words about their work. So I'd like to invite Matt Fightmaster, Greg Fisher, Dave Tuttle from Public Works, Colin Sanders, and Mike Gutierrez from Clayton Facilities. And then Byron's going to say a few words about his Parks team.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I just wanted to say thank you for this recognition. It is amazing work that these guys do last winter and every winter that they go out and take care of these roads. But it really is a large coordinated effort between us, Fleet, Facilities, Parks, just a large number of people. So even outside of the Public Works Department, the coordination that it takes to keep the trucks running and assistance from the Parks staff when we're down people or something like that, and then Facilities to keep the facility up and running. It is a really large coordinated effort. So really thankful for the entire group that we have, including us and everybody else involved.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Dave Tuttle, District Three Manager. I want to thank you for this award. Very proud of these guys and what they do. And I'd like to talk to you a little bit about sacrifice. These guys, what they sacrifice for their families, the holidays that they give up, the weekends that they give up, and the endless amount of sleep that they give up. Very proud of them, and I want to thank you for this opportunity.
Good morning, Greg Fisher, District Two Manager. I want to thank you for the award as well. And just kind of share the challenges that are there. You know, it's not that the schedule is just, it changes so much last minute, all night long, clowns, kind of like being in a Star Wars movie, you know, just that snow blowing sideways. So there's a lot of, not even the physical side, the mental fatigue that comes with it. And these guys handle it. They do a great job. This team is amazing.
Great, thank you so much.
Morning, Commissioners. My name is Colin Sanders. I'm the Operations Manager of Fleet Facilities. Thank you very much for this award. Our teams, when the Public Works are out clearing the roads, our teams are on our lots, clearing the driveways, the sidewalks, trying to make it safe for us to be able to come in and get to work. I'm very proud of them. They work relentlessly, late hours at night, early in the morning, sometimes twenty-four hours long through the weekends, and they miss their holidays as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Gutierrez. I want to second everything that the managers have spoken to. I was there. I can't tell you how many Thanksgiving dinners I'd get up from to come into work to support our staff. So, and I know Steve, you've actually been to the shop during the snow many a times, too. So anyways, thankless, thankless hours, lots of work, but it's collaborative effort between all the teams. So thank you guys for the work.
Thank you.
I also want to thank you very much, Commissioners, for recognizing our teams. My team is getting our system fired up with our irrigation system so they couldn't be here. Although, one member of our team is here, Trevor, wherever he is, in the back, of course. He's here today to represent his guys. You know, we really appreciate the partnership with both Public Works and Fleet and Facilities, Mikey's team that keeps our equipment running, partnering with Amir's staff at the park to keep Riverdale Regional Park ready for any event during ice and snow. And certainly, the Public Works team, as Matt had mentioned, we support when we're needed to drive routes for Public Works. When the snow gets deep enough, we help on the streets with even just with our pickups with plows on them. But also, we keep the trails clear. And we get a lot of positive feedback from the community that uses the trails to commute, and that's included as a part of it. So we really appreciate Brian and the team for including us today, and thank you so much for this honor.
Thank you. Okay, congratulations to the Snow and Ice Team Commissioners. Any comments for the team?
Just very briefly, it was mentioned, I think the word thankless was used a few times. And I am sure that it feels that way because it's a service that people don't think about until they already need it, when you already, and your team's job is to anticipate that. So please hear and feel a sincere thank you from all of us up here today to you, and carry that with you during those cold, snowy, and stressful times because we really do truly appreciate what you contribute to our community. And this is a life safety issue, and we truly appreciate your sacrifice and commitment to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Commissioner Odorizil.
I want to thank the folks that are on this team and overall, everyone at Public Works. I was an offensive lineman, and there's a lot of similarities between offensive lineman and folks in Public Works and some of these jobs. They don't know it when things are going right, right? They only know when the quarterback gets sacked or when there's an issue. There are a lot of things you guys are doing right, and you don't always hear it. And yes, it's sometimes like being an offensive lineman or in some of these jobs, it's a thankless job because people don't tell you thank you because they don't see, they only notice it if like we take, if the quarterback gets sacked. But what I'm getting at is we're very thankful for all the work that you do, and it does mean a lot and appreciate it because you guys are the ones helping us move the ball down the field every single day. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So it seems like just yesterday, we kicked off the Snow and Ice season. And here we are, we're almost at the end of May Memorial Day weekend, this coming weekend. I want to thank the district managers of Public Works, all of you, Parks Department, the Fleet Department. You have embraced this board. You know, I hear you saying thank you to us. It's really a thank you to all of you. You've really embraced this board. You've had us out at your departments. We visited the Strasburg Fleet or the Strasburg Public Works Department, and you had the equipment out there for us to get familiar with, take a tour of your facility. We were also out at Parks just recently. And then, Mikey, it's been a while, but we were out there for the Snow and Ice event. And we just want to thank you so much for what you do for Adams County. My dad worked for the airport when it was Stapleton International Airport. And we get the luxury every day, whether you have an eight-to-five job, your Monday through Friday. But there are folks in our community and all of these folks here that do shift work. And they do twelve-hour days at times. They have holdovers. And as they said, they work nights and weekends and also holidays. So I know the family sacrifice firsthand when it comes to your job. I appreciate your loyalty and your dedication. Please thank your families for us. As my family knows, Snow and Ice is not my favorite season at all. I'm really happy that it's, you know, it's sunshining and we have Memorial Day weekend this weekend. But thank you for what you do, not only for Snow and Ice and the removal, but what you do year-round for all the citizens of Adams County. Truly appreciate it. Thank you for being here. So after, so the Snow and Ice team has received a crystal trophy in honor of their work. So congratulations. Thank you to everyone on this team effort. After, please stay around, and we're going to take a picture afterwards. But now, we will introduce our Employee of the Season category winners. So Commissioner Henson.
Thank you. Our first category is extra effort. This category honors individuals who provide a unique level of service that fosters good business relationships and enhances a positive reputation. We invite Amir Fakir, Director of Facilities and Fleet Management, back to the podium, along with Rich Barnett. Miranda Rose nominated Rich with this submission. Rich is continuously a solid performer the team can count on to step up and assume responsibility to manage critical issues at any county facility. On two occasions, Rich has responded to issues during his time off. The first was a reported fire in the vicinity of the Government Center on a Sunday afternoon. Rich responded to the property, assessed the risk, and checked air handlers in the building to ensure there was no smoke intrusion. The second recent incident involved oil spilled on the crosswalk areas of the public and employee entrances. Rich was contacted at home and quickly responded to block off the area and make it safe. He also scheduled a painter for the following morning to clean and resurface the crosswalk. Rich has proven himself as an accomplished leader, coworker, and asset to Adams County. Mix that with a consistent, positive attitude and great sense of humor, and Rich makes a great candidate for Employee of the Season. Amir, or Rich, anybody at the podium, would you please like to say a few words?
Morning again, Commissioners. Colin Sanders, Fleet and Facilities. I'm very proud to introduce Rich to you. He's been with us for about fourteen years. He started as a Building Maintenance Tech and was recently promoted to a lead Building Maintenance Tech. It's interesting because both those incidents, I was actually involved in, and was extremely thankful that he was here. The first one, I'd been here for about two weeks. And I was clear on the other side of Denver, and I got a call from Amir, actually, saying, hey, I think there's a fire at the Government Center. Okay, cool. Who do I call? So I called Ted. He was actually nowhere near. He gave me Rich's phone number. I called Rich. And, you know, within at least fifteen minutes, Rich is at the Government Center determining no fire. There was, they were burning the ditches out back. You know, and doing everything that was mentioned in the memo. He was checking the air handlers, closing those in case we had smoke. He stayed with the building until that fire went past the building and, you know, checked in with anybody that was concerned about it. The second incident that we had, the crosswalks we had got real slippery due to the repaving outside. And then it rained, and it just created this real slick surface out there. We had a couple of employees slip and fall. So we felt this was pretty serious. It was about six o'clock. I was here. I didn't want anybody crossing the crosswalk anymore, so I stood by to make sure that didn't happen. And I called Rich. the crosswalk anymore, so I stood by to make sure that didn't happen. And I called Rich yet again, and he packed up his truck, came over right away. He had all the equipment. We could close off the crosswalk and put some slicer on it. He also checked the other crosswalk. I think he left about nine o'clock that night. Those are just two minor examples. Another one, I was here in the building on Saturday, off duty, picking up some paperwork. The elevators broke down. There's Rich, again, with the elevator technician, getting our elevators fixed before Monday morning. So, this is just the kind of guy he is. He's always positive, upbeat, a can-do guy. He will do anything for you, and we can always rely on him. So I'm very proud that he's getting this award. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioners. I'm not very good at public speaking, but I did attend a graduation yesterday, so I picked up some tips. I'm ready to give a keynote address here. Those are some great accolades. Thank you guys, everyone. And I also like to thank the Commissioners for having this program to recognize us as employees. It means a lot to all of us, and I have great people to work with, and it's always been good. I was taught early on to take ownership of, you know, our property and care deeply about all the people that I work with, and that's kind of what drives me. So, thank you all, and I appreciate the award. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes, we want to wish you, we just did give you a big round of applause, but we want to officially say congratulations, Rich, and thank you for your dedication to keeping our employees and our community safe.
Thank you.
Well, we enjoy these awards too, just in case you can't tell by the giant smiles on our faces, hearing these stories and pausing so that we can celebrate the amazing staff and what you all do of your personal time, staying till nine o'clock at night to make sure that no one slips on a crosswalk to putting out fires. Just like, y'all are truly amazing. I am honored to do our next category, which is for our First Responder, which honors individuals who are the first to respond to an emergency or threat, and have responsibility to protect the public to the best of their abilities. We welcome back Byron Fanning, Director of Parks, Open Space, and Cultural Arts, to the front with Emily Kurian. Emily, I see them coming on down, received her nomination from Eric Collins. Ranger Emily Kurian was en route to Riverdale Regional Park when she was flagged down along Riverdale Road. A vehicle containing a mother and two children had just gone off the roadway and had flipped onto its roof. The vehicle was severely damaged, and the three occupants were trapped inside, some with significant injuries. Emily dispatched for medical and law enforcement units to respond immediately and went to work extracting the two children by cutting their seat belts, successfully pulling the children from the wreckage. She then worked alongside the Adams County Sheriff's Deputy Losh to get the mother out of the vehicle. This was a highly charged and emotional scene. Emily stayed with the children while their mother was being worked on for medical transport by the medics. Emily followed her training and her instincts to positively affect the outcome of this call. Excellent response by Ranger Kurian that, that day, potentially a life-saving effort. Byron and Emily, would you like to offer any remarks?
You know, Eric has some remarks that he'd like to bring. I also wanted to say that Emily is not only a great employee, but a great person, and she brings 100% to the job every single day, which is, she's a pleasure to work with. But Eric, why don't you come on up?
Good morning Commissioners, thanks for having us here today. First want to say congratulations to Emily. This recognition is a long time coming for her. Emily is an extremely high-level public servant, and I feel lucky to be able to support her through this phase in her career. This particular incident is one of several that could have garnered recognition over the course of her short time as an Adams County Ranger. In the field of first response, we refer to Emily as what's called a hard charger. A hard charger is somebody who's first out the door, wants to be on scene, wants to help the community, provides high-quality customer service day in and day out. Quite frankly, Emily, as her supervisor, this could both be a blessing and a curse. She's zipping all over the county, serving the community in so many ways. I jokingly refer to her as a hurricane amongst our small team. It can be hard to slow her down. I've received many emails and messages from Adams County colleagues, outside partnering agencies, and the general public commending Emily for her services she provides. This is extremely refreshing in a profession and era where complaints can often be the norm. Keep up the amazing work, Emily. We're so proud of you, and I'm excited to see how you serve the community in Powska for years to come.
Good morning. First, obviously, thank you Eric and Byron for the kind words for the nomination of this award. I'm honored to have been chosen. As an Adams County Park Ranger, every day is different for us. We never know when we clock in, what the day is going to bring. We go through an extensive amount of training to be prepared for any situation, and this particular case, I was in the right place at the right time, and I'm thankful that my training, all of the training that we do, kicked in, and I was able to help people in the community that needed it at the time. I'm thankful to work for Adams County. I want to say a huge thank you to the Parks Department, everyone that's here to support me today. Thank you Commissioners for the support of our program, and again, thank you Eric for the nomination.
So we already, again, like Commissioner Henson, you already did the applause, but congratulations, Emily, and thank you for your heroism. I can only imagine what your expertise and the calming effect you're able to have on scene and your quick thinking. So thank you for that, and apparently, for many other times that you have stepped up to serve community in a time of crisis. Thank you.
All right, next award is for the Making It Happen category. This category honors employees who achieve a desired outcome despite facing adversity such as a lack of resources, unexpected challenges, et cetera. Please welcome Human Services Director Katie McDougall down to the podium, along with Jennifer Alvarado. Jennifer has nominated Charlene, is it Giggy or Giddy? Okay, sorry, who wrote, "As Jennifer's supervisor, I received an email from one of her clients. This is an interstate compact case, and normally, all we do is see the family monthly to ensure safety and to send, and sending state is still ultimately responsible for the child." The email edited down for brevity is in part, says, "I am kinship foster to my grandson. I am writing to give an expression of gratitude for the outstanding performance for my caseworker, Jennifer Alvarado. I want to express her knowledge, hard work, and how she has always been a solution to any problem that arises. If she does not know the answer, she doesn't quit there, and she always finds the answer. I truly appreciate how she gives guidance and support through any and all issues that I've ever come across. I am constantly impressed by her performance and her efforts, and I feel indebted to her. Huge thank you to Jennifer Alvarado for her hard work and dedication. I am so grateful to have you as our caseworker." Wow, thank you. Katie, take it from here.
Great, thank you Commissioners. Thank you so much for taking the time to recognize Jen. I was told that she hates public recognition, so to make this extremely short for her, so I'm going to try to do that. But I just want to mention, anytime you get a thank you from a family when they're involved in really child safety, and she is far and few between, so just really appreciate Jen for how she reaches families, how she cares for families, and how she really helps them reach their greatest success. She is really one of our top caseworkers, lead workers for the department, so thank you so much for taking time to recognize her. Charlene, did you want to add anything?
I just wanted to point out that this was an email from one of her families, but this is what she gives to all her families, the same attention. So, congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm grateful. I just want to thank all of you guys, all of my team, all of the children, family and adult services, caseworkers that are out there doing the same thing that I'm doing every single day. So I'd like to share this award with them, and know that it is appreciated.
Okay, our next category is the Performance Accelerator category. So this category recognizes a nominee who accelerates team and organizational performance by developing strategic, innovative, and/or continuous improvement solutions that result in improved outcomes. So we invite John Nelson, Director of People and Culture Services, up to the podium, along with Steve Dordis, who was nominated by Lindsey Earle, Rachel Jakubowski, Catherine Osmondson, Cornelia Warnke, and Alyssa Blakeney. As our, so here's the quote, as they make their way to the podium. "As our people and culture business partner, Stephen demonstrates professionalism coupled with an approachable and kind demeanor, making him a trusted advisor to all supervisors he interacts with. His thoughtfulness, authenticity, and validation in every meeting create a supportive environment, allowing us to feel heard and respected. Although Stephen splits his time between multiple departments, he makes himself available in a timely manner, and he remembers little details about each supervisor and manager he meets with. Demonstrating, he actively listens during our conversations. Stephen expertly weaves humor into our conversations, lightening the mood while maintaining a high degree of professionalism. Beyond his professional expertise, Steve's genuine care for others is evident in the relationship he builds, which are rooted in mutual respect. He is a true asset to the organization, and his contributions are key to our department's success." John and Stephen, would you like to speak at this time?
Thank you. Just briefly, first to the board, thank you for continuing to prioritize and support this recognition program. This work matters. It's important. Thank you so much. Stephen, it's an absolute pleasure to recognize you as our Employee of the Season Performance Accelerator. Stephen is one of the most genuine and authentic individuals that I've had the pleasure to work with in my career. He's someone who shows up with integrity, with thoughtfulness, with relentless commitment to find solutions, and he doesn't just do the work, he makes the work better for everyone around him. Accelerator, I think, is a perfect description of Stephen. He leads with curiosity, with humor, with strategic partnerships, with a quiet confidence that lifts those around him up. I would be remiss if I didn't mention this, but if you know Stephen, you know he's a big Ted Lasso fan, and Ted Lasso talks about how he believes in hope, how he believes in belief, and I think we can all say that working with Stephen, he makes us believe a little bit more too. So we are so, so grateful to have Stephen on our team. Congratulations, Stephen, and thank you for being exactly who you are.
I do just want to make it clear, I bribed a lot of people to be here today. I hope that's, I hope that's okay. No, I'm truly humbled to be here today, and I can't thank my client groups enough because that's really where I find all sorts of joy in my role, and getting to support such amazing, dedicated professionals, seeing them do the direct work and making the impact on the community. That's what really gets me going, and that's what really makes this a really satisfying employment experience. And so, when I went to school, one of my professors said, you'll spend, or adults will spend, three-quarters of their waking adult lives at work, so let's try and make that a good experience. And that's my goal. That's my goal every day. But really, truly, just want to say thank you to my client groups, a lot of them here behind me today, humbled that they are here, and I just want to say, I love supporting all of you. So, thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Okay, next up, the Success in Practice category honors individuals who play an integral role in a successful intervention, problem resolution, and improvement with a customer, resident, or process in Adams County. We invite Katie McDougall, Director of Human Services, and Cherie Kaufman to the front. Rhonda Bergen nominated Cherie with this submission. Cherie was assigned a case in September 2024 from another caseworker who had been open for two, the case had been open for two years. There were two children in two different foster homes. The case was heading to termination of parental rights when she took over. The mom was difficult at first, but Cherie was able to break down some of mom's barriers quickly. She advocated for the mom, and one of the children returned to mom in November of 2024 after being in a foster home for 13 months. The other child was returned to mom in December after being in and out of placement since May of 2023. During a court hearing in January of '25, Cherie was praised by mom's attorney, the guardian ad litem, and the Clinical Fellowship for the great job she did in working with the mom in such a short period of time. Wow. All right, Katie, it's yours.
Again, thank you Commissioners for recognizing Cherie. What you heard here is what she does with all of the families she works with. She does a great job of helping them reduce the barriers and the challenges that they're experiencing, and she has one of the highest rates of reunification with families for our county in terms of the work that she does, and so we're just extremely grateful for all she does for the families here in Adams County. She also is shy, so she sends her thank you, but isn't going to say any additional words.
Okay, next, we present the Unsung Hero category, which honors individuals for providing high-quality, reliable, and critical work that if not completed, would compromise operations. This person functions behind the scenes, is willing to improve work situations, and does so without fanfare or being prompted. Please welcome Dr. Kelly Widenbach, Executive Director of the Adams County Health Department, to the podium, along with Rosalyn Assuncion, and I, please forgive me if I, please tell me if I need to change my pronunciation. Thank you. Jennifer Tellis nominated Rosalyn by writing, "Rosalyn Assuncion is the kind of hero who doesn't seek the spotlight, but absolutely deserves it. She works tirelessly behind the scenes, ensuring our agency thrives and our communities receive the best possible support. While her contributions may not always be front and center, they are the driving force behind our staff and the agency's overall success and growth. Rosalyn is the glue that holds everything together, the engine that keeps us moving forward, and the quiet force making big things happen. Rosalyn is the brain behind our agency's financial operations, managing everything from multimillion-dollar budgets to simple program expenses. Rosalyn's dedication to fiscal responsibility, transparency, and trust has earned her respect across our agency, Adams County Government, and most importantly, in the communities we serve. It's a privilege to work alongside someone as remarkable as Rosalyn, and she is truly deserving of the recognition as an unsung hero." So, team at the podium, I'm tossing it to you.
Thank you. First, I want to say I'm not Dr. Widenbach. I'm Jennifer Tellis, and I was very honored to nominate Rosalyn for this award. If you do know Rosalyn, this isn't her jam either to be nominated, so I am going to make this short and just say, Rosalyn's work is the backbone of everything at our public health agency, and without her, our services couldn't reach everyone that it does. And we are so thankful to have her, to be the leader that she is, but also with such a heart in the work that she does, and how much she supports our staff. So I'm just going to say, from every budget revision you've had to do at midnight, to supporting the staff who are concerned with such a zen, solid, strong force, but then also making a comfortable place for our staff to express mental health issues. We all just want to say thank you, Rosalyn. Thank you for everything. And Rosalyn, do you want to say anything?
I just wanted to say thank you for the recognition, and then I'm very proud to have worked for Adams County and for our Health Department, so to help them. have worked for Adams County and for our health department, so to help them do what they do.
Well, thank you, and our sincerest congratulations.
Our next award is for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Champion. This award recognizes an individual who seeks opportunities and initiatives that strive to make Adams County an employer of choice by creating an environment where everyone belongs, feels supported, encouraged, and respected. We invite Katie McDougall, Director of Human Services, back to the podium with Kelsey Root. Katrina George nominated Kelsey with this submission. Kelsey has put so much thought and care into a family that she is serving, whose baby has had many serious health conditions, as well as Down Syndrome. Both parents have developmental delays and are Spanish-speaking only. Kelsey has worked tirelessly to ensure that the whole family has the support and services in place that they need. She recognized the family has learning and language barriers, so she has to make sure they don't have, they have, so she has made sure to not have too many services in place because it can also overwhelm the family. That means Kelsey has taken on the additional roles to ensure the family has exactly the supports that they need. Kelsey is more than just the winner of this category, she has been chosen as the overall Winter Employee of the Season. As such, she is receiving the $350 in Culture in Action points and a trophy in addition to the certificate. Katie and Kelsey, would you like to say a few words?
Good morning, Commissioners, thank you for recognizing Kelsey. I don't have Kelsey here today.
I was going to say, you look one short.
She is working with families, so definitely doing the work that she does well, but her manager, Amber, will say a couple of words as well. Kelsey has gone above and beyond in her work with this family, but many other families who are chasing complex, facing complex challenges. She shows extraordinary compassion to the families that she works with, and is always very dedicated and very creative, as expressed by her nomination. She goes above and beyond every day to make sure that families are receiving the support they need. So thank you for taking the time to recognize Kelsey.
Good morning. On behalf of Kelsey, she's actually at Academy to be a supervisor, so she could not miss. So she was, she was apologetic, but she says, "In honor to be selected for this season's Diversity Award and Overall Award, while this recognition is incredible, I'd like to turn the spotlight onto each and every one of my families I worked with along the way. They all deserve equal love, support, and a second chance to be their best selves. I have helped them find the tools, but they have the architects for the future. Thank you for, to Adams County for this award, and to my families and my colleagues, I will pay it forward." Thank you.
Well, Kelsey, I hope you watch this video later. I hope you're learning a lot in training to better serve families. Congratulations, and I hope you enjoy your much-deserved recognition. Our Employee of the Season category award winners all receive 5,000 Culture in Action points and a Certificate of Recognition. To all our winners, thank you for your service to the Adams County community. We would like to thank all of, thank all employees joining us today, both in person and watching the live stream above to our YouTube channel, to support, in support of your colleagues as they are honored for their great work. We also encourage you to nominate deserving coworkers. The Spring Employee and Team of the Season nominations are now open, so please visit MyAdams for more information on how you can nominate deserving coworkers and teams. Now, we would like to take a group photo with the team and employee winners, so please join us down in the front for a photo. To all the Employees of the Season winners, please meet with our photographer outside the public hearing room immediately following the group photo to get your individual photos. Thank you so much. Okay, Jamie, do we have anyone signed up for Public Comment?
No, we do not.
We do not. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak under Public Comment at this time? Not seen anybody. Is elected official communication? Anyone from the board? Commissioner Hudson?
Hi, good morning, everyone. That was, I love Employee of the Quarter, that was, this was a great way to start our meeting. I just want to make a couple of quick comments. As we, I think we've alluded to in other, in the meetings, have mentioned, you know, the, we are beginning our budget process, we're actually having that, that's a topic in our study session today. We are carefully watching what's happening at the federal level, specifically in regards to our human services programming, because a lot of that is federal pass-through funds. And things are moving very rapidly on that front, our staff has been tracking this the entire time, but I just want to say for the benefit of the community that it looks like we may be having to manage some cuts to Medicaid. And the impact this has on our community is significant, because one in three residents in Adams County is on, receives a support of some sort through those federal funds, whether it's Medicaid or SNAP, which is food assistance. It touches a lot of people, and while one in third are receiving those, two in three people in our county are eligible to receive those services. So this is, this is a large part of our community whom we are serving, and we are watching that. They may have the budget signed as early as Friday, but I just want to point out that these cuts, and they may not be immediate, they may be coming in next year, they may be coming in as late as 2029, but we are going to see impacts in our community. And even though these are being framed by some as a budget balancing effort, they don't balance the federal budget, and they do have an impact on our county, they are being done in order to put money in other areas of our population federally, predominantly by providing tax cuts to a significant, to those who earn significant amounts of money. That is just, those are facts that are being reported across a wide range of news services. And so we are going to be tracking these, and we will be sharing out information, and, but this board, and I'll speak for myself also, we are seriously committed to doing everything we can for those one in three and two in three residents here in our county, and everyone in our county who is counting on us for crucial services that are life, health, and safety issues. We're talking about people who are, who are, who use wheelchairs, living independently, not having funding that they have previously received in order to remain living independently. So these impacts are serious, we take them seriously, we take them to heart, and we are going to be doing everything in our, looking through this lens as we are crafting our budget for 2026, and I will be transparent about that, and we will be having significant ongoing conversations regarding this. One thing I'm looking forward to this week on Friday is we are having our Veterans Memorial Day celebration of our veterans at our Veterans Memorial Park, at the Riviera Regional Park. And I'm looking very much forward to honoring everyone who has served our country, thinking back to the beginning of, beginnings of Memorial Day and the sacrifice that military, those who serve in the military and their families have made to protect democracy and defend our freedom. I take it very seriously to honor that because I'm personally very committed to defending democracy, both here at home and nationally. And I'm very excited to honor these people who gave their lives specifically so that the United States of America would remain a democratic republic, and that we would enjoy rights and freedoms for everyone equally across our country. So I invite you all to join us on Friday morning at 8:00 a.m. at the Veterans Memorial to honor our veterans and everyone who served our country to defend our democracy and freedom for all of us. And I'm very grateful to serve Adams County, I'm very proud to be part of this community, and I apologize for becoming emotional, but this community and these staff awards have moved me, and I'm very proud and grateful to be an Adams County Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other Commissioners, Commissioner Mulca?
Yeah, I really wanted to just do a quick shout-out. I spent my evening last night with the Sherwood Community Group. I know that several board members have hung out with that team before. I really just wanted to get, yes, I just wanted to do a quick shout-out to other community groups across Adams County. Adams County is a very large place, we understand that, but being able to engage with community groups, neighborhood groups, you know, whatever you would like to call yourself, please let us know if we could swing by and have a conversation with you. There was a lot of great conversations last night, and the community brought lots of concerns that I think are relevant and things that we need to bring forward and continue to work on as a board. And so I was happy to spend my evening with them, and just want to encourage, if there are any other community groups who are meeting or have additional interests or questions for the board, please reach out to us, let us know, we'd love to attend as we're able. So, that's all I got.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. I'm just going to jump in here. Earlier, we recognized the snow and ice team from Adams County, as well as individual employees. Over the weekend, on Sunday, we've had some really adverse weather in eastern Adams County, particularly Bennett and Strasburg and unincorporated areas. I want to thank, first of all, the Sheriff's Office, our emergency management, our staff for putting information out there for the safety and well-being of our residents. We have transitioned, weather now, we went from snow and ice, we're in this Colorado spring weather where the conditions can change fairly quickly. We started out with a really nice morning, as Colorado does, and then we encountered turbulence in the afternoon, seems to be a pattern here, lived here my whole life. A really heartfelt, you know, our thoughts are with those residents that have lost their home. We don't know of any casualties that occurred, we also know that a business was affected out there, and you know, the Board of County Commissioners really take not only personal property, but when it comes to your home and housing, is so critical. And so we wish all of you the best, we have our OEM, Emergency Operations is standing by, I understand that we're in recovery. I did sign a proclamation on behalf of the board, it would be further ratified here in a few moments under new business for the county manager. We continue to assess, I will also share with you that you are really well-represented, not just here locally, but at the federal level. We did have U.S. Representative reach out, and also Senator Michael Bennett's office reached out to us nearly immediately, as soon as they could, their staff was in contact with us on how they can assist. So it is really those relationships that we build. I look at this position as being a good neighbor to not only our residents here, but our congressional staff, our state representatives, how we can all work together. And it's really building that relationship with them that I want you to say on record, I appreciate so much their response. And we, for this time around, we went without a lot of substantial damage, but we know that this is just the beginning of the season. Also substantial is very impactful for those that were affected. So I just want to share that we have reinforcements up and down each level of local government, so the county want to give, you know, our, our thanks to Trish Stiles as the county manager of Bennett. She was nearly in immediate contact with us and our staff, not with the board, but with our staff here, and all the way up to the congressional representatives and senators. So I'll have, the county manager will have more on the proclamation here under new business, so I just want to say that. Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Odoricio?
Yeah, I think it was important to note that, that all the different folks from around, particularly our federal delegation, who did reach out, Crowe, Evans, Pedersen, Boebert, Bennett, Hickman, Looper, the Goose, all, we all, we hear a lot of support, and that's what Colorado does, is they rally around folks when, when something happens. And we also, we also got feedback and outreach from some of our cities and our fellow county Commissioners. And so I just think it's important to note that when, when things go bad, we're all together and we're in it together, and I appreciate it, and I appreciate this board, and I appreciate our staff. And I appreciate the Sheriff's Office for leading that operations, the emergency management team, and just like any situation, we're going to take what we got here, and then we're going to look forward, and we're going to continue to do better, lessons learned, and we're going to continue to do that no matter what the situation is. And I know that we're going to be, we're in good hands when we all stick together. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? All right, so then we're on to the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Second. And the consent calendar passes five to zero. Now we're under new business, so county manager, you're up first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item of new business is a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and Vance Brothers in the amount of $922,613.63 for the 2025 SEAL program. Here to present is Public Works Director Brian Staley.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for taking the time to hear our recommendation for the 2025 SEAL program. This is a key component of our roadway preservation strategy in the county. For the upcoming year, the SEAL program will serve to preserve 33 lane miles of roadway across the county. Excuse me. Following a competitive bidding process, we're recommending entering into a contract with Vance Brothers LLC, I think that's Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $922,613.63. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you, Brian. Questions from the board? Commissioner Hudson, Molika and Odoricio?
One quick question, Brian. Thank you so much. In our bid, do we take the lowest bid or you look at things in in? How do we pick our bid, our contractor, excuse me?
For this, for an invitation for bid process, we choose the lowest bidder.
And this is and you said this is a not to exceed amount?
That's correct.
Great, okay. And when will this, when will the ceiling begin?
As soon as awarded, we'll we'll work with purchasing to get a notice to proceed and we anticipate it will begin early June.
Great, and one more question. Do we, is that is that information available on the website so people can see where are those efforts are being being spent this summer?
Absolutely. We we have a robust and interactive map available at adcodegov.org-publicworks, where people can enter their address or use a color coded key to see everywhere where we intend to do crack sealing and all of our other operations programming across the county.
And that crack sealing is is instead of your complete resurfacing, right? It just it adds life to the it adds time to the life of the road, yes?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Molika and Odoricio?
My question was just asked. I was curious where someone could find more information about the work you were going to be doing, but thank you for the dashboard and we'll also include that in our social media outreach as well as folks continue to utilize the tools that we have on our website.
I just want to say thank you. You guys are doing an outstanding job. I know you're working hard to get that stuff out there and I love the dashboard and the transparency that you've brought to this team where we can be able to forward on it and a link and share it with folks, saying, look, this is where your community fits into the plan. It really helps, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that said, I move to approve the resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and Vance Brothers LLC in the amount of $922,613.63 for the 2025 chip in, what is it? The SEAL program? You guys moved the language on me. As presented.
Second.
Okay, and your motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Brian. Thanks for all the work you do.
Madam Chair, our second item of new business is a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and Justice Works in the amount of $1,600,000 for youth intervention, removal prevention, mobile intervention, life skills and home based services. Here to present is Human Services Director Katie McDougall.
Good morning, Commissioners. Katie McDougall, the Human Services Director. This is a request for a new core contract between Adams County and the Division of Children and Family Services with Justice Works, who has been selected through the core open RFA process to provide youth intervention, removal prevention, mobile intervention, life skills and home based services. The funding source for this is our 8020, so federally funded at 80%, 20% by state and county funds. The timeframe for this contract is June 1st, 2025 through May 31st, 2029, in the amount of $400 per year totaling $1.6 million in total. I'm happy to take any questions you have.
Great, thank you, Katie. Questions from the board? Commissioner Odoricio and Molika? Do you have anything?
All right, so this is, is this the same one we've been using? Past how many years?
Over a decade, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought. That's why I look familiar. Okay, cool. No other questions. I'm just looking at the the cost. Has it been fairly consistent over time?
Yes, this actually was approved by you all previously, but we found an issue with the previous approved amount and so are just coming back to make that correction today.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Just need a motion from the board?
Move to approve as presented.
I'll second. The motion passes five to zero. Thank you, county manager. County attorney, my apologies, the disaster declaration is under your agenda item.
No problem. I just thought, you know, we don't do this very often, so I thought a little explanation might be helpful. The, as the commissioners have already discussed, there was a tornado in unincorporated Adams County Sunday afternoon resulted in some significant damage to particular families in terms of buildings and some residences. Traditionally, we enter into disaster declarations when we believe either our resources are going to be at our capacity or just in order to effectuate some of our emergency processes and cooperation agreements with both our our local partners and state and federal. And so sometimes it's not always known, you know, what the extent of the damage is or what resources we might need. The sheriff started this process to get a disaster declaration initiated and Commissioner Baca signed that yesterday as the chair to the board. And that is our process that the chair can sign emergency declarations in the absence of a public hearing because we can't always wait for a public hearing. And then your clerk to the board was very quick to get this on your agenda today so that we could have a a clear approval by the entire board and public notice as well. So that's what you have before you today is a resolution ratifying the prior signature from your chair.
Thank you, Heidi. Questions? Commissioner Odoricio?
The the only thing is, it's my understanding that if there's anything that approaches our procurement, our current procurement thresholds, that we will be consulted. I know that this does provide additional flexibility in that process, but with there is an expectation since it's limited damage that we're aware of so far that anything that approaches our current non emergency will be at least consulted with as a board. With that said, I would be happy, and that's not an official thing. It's just with that said, I would be happy to make a motion to approve unless there's more discussion. Okay, a move to approve as presented. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I support Emma's motion to approve.
I was moving a second. It all works out. We're all we're all on the same team. Great, thank you, board. And the motion passes five to zero. Okay, any executive sessions, Heidi, for us this week?
Not today, thank you.
All right. No, thank you. Was there clapping from the audience? Yes. Grateful for attorneys don't always want to see them. I know, exactly. Land use is next. Does staff need just a minute to set up? You do. Okay, why don't we come back at 10:45? So that gives us about seven minutes.
We're about five minutes late, we're going to start with the land use hearing, so if you, we'll start with the staff presentation, then I'll go through the land use process.
Okay, good morning, can you hear me? Okay, I can't hear myself. My name is David Aduboski, and I'm here to present to you the case GCSA Event Center Conditional Use Permit Full Barn. Oh, I went, I went too fast, thank you. So the request is a conditional use permit for an event center. And this case went to planning commission on April twenty fourth of this year, and it was continued by planning commission. And so per planning commissions recommendation of continuance, we are also recommendation recommending a continuance to the July twenty ninth, two thousand twenty five B O C C hearing. Thank you, I'm available for questions.
So is there anyone in the audience present that intended on speaking to this item? Not seeing anyone, so any, if there's anyone that made the meeting today, wanted to speak to this item, we'd like to hear you at this time. Okay, so not seeing anything. The request is for a continuance of R C U twenty twenty three dash one G C S A Event Center Condition Use Permit Full Barn to the July twenty ninth, two thousand twenty five Board of County Commissioners Hearing, so I'll go ahead and make that motion. Second. So the continuance was approved five to zero, so thank you so much. The next item is the vacation twenty twenty four dash two. Second. So the continuance was approved five to zero, so thank you so much. The next item is the vacation twenty twenty four dash two. A land vacation, not like a vacation vacation. Unless you want to change your presentation on the fly and start pitching vacation locations to us, we're into it.
I think I'll skip that. Good morning Commissioners, Brian Maron with Community Economic Development Department. This morning I will be presenting case V A C twenty twenty four dash two, the toxic and fine silver east sixty four avenue vacation located at approximately forty nine thousand two hundred east sixty four avenue. Their request in front of you this morning is a roadway vacation for a portion of the right of way of east sixty four avenue. The subject section is located in central Adams County, just north of the town of Bennett. And this section of road abuts residential properties and dead ends at Kiowa Creek, which runs north to south through the area. The current zoning of the properties adjacent to the subject section are agricultural three, and they are used for residential purposes. The future land use around the subject section is agricultural large and small scale. The comprehensive plan designates agricultural small scale as appropriate for smaller agricultural operations that balance balance housing and agricultural productions on site. While agricultural large scale allows for farming and ranching to be considered as the primary use of the property. From the site photos, we can see that the areas surrounding the subject section is agriculture in nature. And as mentioned previously, the areas around in this section of road is surrounded by residentially used properties. With roadway vacations, the commissioners need to consider the following criteria for approval. That the roadway vacation complies with development standards and original conditions of approval. That nonconforming lots are not created or increasing nonconformity. There's a consistent, that the request is consistent with the purposes and intent of the subdivision regulations. There is no detriment to the public health, safety and welfare. There is no adjoining line that is left without access to an established public road. And if the roadway is a state or federal highway, divocation has been approved by the State Transportation Commission. Now, to better understand the request of this case, it's helpful to provide an overview of what the applicant is aiming to accomplish with this entitlement. The residents that live adjacent to this section of road have been dealing with a number of issues to include trespassing onto properties, loitering, unpermitted camping activities at Kiowa Creek, brush fires due to that camping activity, as well as property damage due to vehicles driving through the neighborhood and suspicious drivers drive accessing the area late into the night. Most of the area, most of the residents of the area are senior citizens, and their request to vacate the roadway is to provide a sense of security to their neighborhood and to avoid dealing with issues that have become a nuisance in their neighborhood. The applicants, as well as the rest of the neighborhood, have provided a signed notarized private easement agreement establishing ownership and maintenance of the subject section if approved for this entitlement. Staff has reviewed the proposed vacation and has determined that it complies with all applicable development standards. As there are no nonconformers created due to this vacation. And furthermore, there is no detriment to the public good, as all property owners have agreed to join a private ease access easement agreement that will still provide access to all properties around in the subject section, as well as maintenance. And the road is not a state or federal highway, which removes the need of divocation to be formally approved by the State Transportation Commission. As part of this entitlement process, a public notice and request for comments was sent to twenty five property owners to include all nine residential properties directly adjacent to the subject section. One public comment in opposition was provided to staff by an adjacent property owner. The comment in opposition states concern of future access onto the site. The property is located at the end of the subject section. There were a couple concerns at the beginning of the case, Core Electric had initial concerns regarding easements. However, once additional notes were added to the vacation, those concerns were properly addressed. And Bennett Fire does have concerns related to the vacation, as they will prefer to maintain the right of way public for safety purposes. Given the current conditions of the site, as well as the proposed vacation plan, staff has determined that the proposal complies with the development standards, there's no adjoining land that is left without proper access to a public road. As the public comment in opposition, properties still receive access off of seventy second avenue. There's no nonconforming lots being created, and there's no detriment to the public good. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the roadway vacation V A C twenty twenty four dash two with six findings of fact. Here are the findings of fact for this particular case, that completes my presentation, but I am available for questions, thank you very much.
Great, thank you so much, I'm going to go over the land use process really quickly, so staff presentation. Next, I'll ask any, if there's any questions from the board for staff. The applicant or applicants will have an opportunity to make a presentation to the board. I will also come back to the board for questions for the applicant. We'll listen to public comment, if there are any here to speak under a public comment. The applicant can respond if requested, it'll come back to the board for discussion and then a motion. So I will just add, if you're here for public comment, it is a good time to express your support, your disdain. You will only have one time to talk to the board in your presentation, ask questions. Even if the questions go unanswered, it's an opportunity for the applicant to hear the question, and they can respond if requested. So at this time, I'm going to go questions from the board. Any questions from the board, Commissioner Henson?
Hi, good morning, thank you, can you please just clarify for me, so this vacation means that we, this road, which I'm assuming was built by Adams County, is going to become a private road rather than a public road?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Henson, yes, that is correct, the road, as you can see on the
Yeah, can we go back to the map, please, because I want to clarify where it's, where it dead ends.
Yeah, so here's the portion of east sixty second, there's no connection to the west of the property, it's just an access that goes from seventy nine all the way to this area here, and it ends basically at Kiowa Creek Commissioner. As you can see from the site photos, the, the road is basically known paved, so it's a very rural in nature.
So who pays for maintenance, if, if we, if the vacation is approved, who pays for maintenance of the road?
That will be the applicant's commissioner, there is a private access easement agreement that will, they will take ownership of the road as well as the maintenance of that road.
And then, thinking very far into the future, I mean, as Adams County continues to grow, if this, and it's, and this site is north of the city of Bennett, which we know, we know is growing rapidly. What happens in the, in the future as development might begin to move, and I mean, you know, forty years ago, we all, the county looked very different, so looking far into the future, what if this road is now in an area that is more developed? Is that, is it something county can, you know, if it's deemed to be in the public interest, can they then make it a public road again? Or, you know, especially if a connection is built or something, or accesses, you know, as road access might change in the, in the area?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner, I can have my colleague Ian Cortez with Right of Way provide a more detailed answer to that than I can.
Great, thanks.
Good morning Commissioners, Ian Cortez, Public Works, roadway supervisor. If the applicants or the future landowners want to prefer to have that road rededicated to the county, they would need the petition to do so, they would have to submit an application for roadway dedication. They would have to construct it, to build it to our standards at that time. So that would, in this case, I think it would be definitely significant upgrade from what we have now out there. And that would be the process.
My question was more about the, in reverse, like if, if, if it's deemed, if, if, say development spreads out that way, as Bennett in that area, as we're seeing increased population in the Bennett area. Looking into the future, if that can, what rights does the county have then, if they, if it's deemed to be, if, if different, if road connections change out there, or there's more development out there, increased population, or other types of commercial development potentially?
So we took that into consideration, looked at the master transportation plan for sixty fourth avenue as it proceeds easterly. Kiowa Creek is definitely a significant feature that we would have to take into consideration along with the flood plain that's out there. We did not want to, we don't have anything planned any, anytime in the near future about putting a bridge up with Kiowa Creek. That would be something that we would definitely consider. Therefore, to, if we needed to do that, let's just say in that half mile segment.
I, I, this is hypothetical, I'm sure.
Hypothetically, total hypothetically, we would need to ask, ask the landowners to re, rededicate that land back to the county for that purposes, and we'd need to have a significant reason to do so at this point. But at this point, the creek is a major deterrent for us to proceed easterly or westerly on sixty fourth avenue.
Right, at this time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then, so that means then the snow removal, all of that becomes private in, in a vacation, is that?
That is correct.
Okay, so that we, so the county has no responsibility if the vacation is approved?
That is correct.
For any maintenance or, now what about the utilities and the fire department who expressed concerns about access?
So as far as the easement commissioner, there is a platno that addresses the concerns from Core regarding their public utilities on the northern portion of the road. As far as Bennett Fire Department, I can, Mr. Ian Cortez can provide additional information on that.
Thank you.
So as to the fire department's interest, we have a little bit of interest in what they are saying as well, because they approve thirty five acre developments that are created by land survey plats. All of those agreements that, or land survey plats are done with a private maintenance agreement. And they are, are to be approved, those roads that are built by private roads out there are to be approved by the Bennett Fire District. And we have yet to hear anything regarding those type of roads at, at that time, so I think we have a little bit of, here's, I don't know, just it seems like they're not picking one side or the other, we've got a double argument, double sword going on for us at this point.
But they have, but they have access as needed, they don't have to ask permission, if we're talking about fire department and Core, utilities and fire have access when needed.
They would have a lockbox as issued by the landowners, the, the seven owners that are there, and they will have access at that point, yes.
Okay, those are my questions at this time, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I just have a quick question, so I'm familiar with roadway vacations. It would have been notated by staff in your presentation. The, the ones I'm more familiar with are not quite this long. So is there anything in our policy that talks to the length of a roadway vacation? Or it's different if, what I've seen is that homes are closer to the access point, where it makes sense to have that type of roadway vacation versus the challenges of maybe emergency vehicles traveling that distance, so I see you Jen, reaching for your mic.
Sure, good morning, Jen, that are planning and development manager. I, I'll start answering the question, and then if there's any, you know, help from behind, then I, I might call on that. But generally speaking, there is a lot of county right of way out in eastern Adams County that has been dedicated, but either not constructed or is not maintained. This is one of those roads that was, appears to have been constructed, but probably doesn't receive a lot of county maintenance. And so it's actually in the property owner's interest to take over maintenance, they'll probably have more attention to, to this roadway. With regard to the fire district, and I think what Ian Cortez was getting at is that there is, there are so many private roads in eastern Adams County and privately maintained roads. We do require that whenever there is a development on a private road, that they enter into road maintenance agreement. So those property owners are in charge of maintenance on their own, that's, that's what's happening here today as well.
Okay, thank you so much, any additional questions for staff? Okay, not seeing any, if the applicant would like to come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you can give your presentation as well.
I'd like to start by just thank you for honoring your veterans. I appreciate that.
He's a, he's a veteran, seventeen years military Vietnam veteran.
Fantastic.
Went through a lot in Vietnam. My name, name is Deborah Tocheck, my husband Gerald Tocheck. And we have owned the property on sixty fourth avenue for fifty years. In March of nineteen seventy five, we purchased sixty acres with my parents and my brother in hopes to each build a home. We found out after we purchased that we had to have thirty five acres to build a home. So we went to the, we went and applied for a variance. And at that time, they told us that we could have a variance for thirty acres for each property, for each home. And, but we had to dedicate thirty feet of our land to the county for road access and an additional ten feet, so we gave them, we gave the county forty feet of our property. And my parents did the same thing, so that was the only part of, of sixty fourth avenue that belonged to the county, the rest of it did not belong to the county at all. And at that time, it was nothing but a trail, there weren't power lines or anything, we paid to have all those put in. And then the county said that they, they would build the road, they would maintain it and all that. If we dedicated it to them, and they did not build it, we did, we built the county road. And my husband has been maintaining it with the neighbors. All of the neighbors help us, all seven property owners take a part in it. Everybody has done this for the last fifty years with no help at all from the county. And that's one of the reasons that we'd like to have it back, because we just like to have it private. And so that people won't be coming in there all the time, we've had people come in and we just like to have it private and so that people won't be coming in there all the time. We've had people come in and and steal things from us, go through our barns. They stole our golden golden retrievers.
I come in from my house, looking into my garage. People walk in my garage and for no business, they didn't even know him, but they drive down my driveway off sixty-fourth. And they wouldn't take anything, but there's just the idea they're walking through my garage. And then he, I'd go out and see what he's doing or see what's going with your woman. And then he'd just say, well, I'm looking for a place to stay. Which was, you know, an excuse, but it's just kind of nerve wracking having people come down there that going through your things that they have known.
And others have come in and they drive around, they say they're looking for the cemetery, the there's a Muslim cemetery north of us. And then there's others that even come in and they they can't even speak English. We didn't even know what they're saying and they're going through everything that we have.
Okay, anything else you'd like to add?
I don't think so.
Okay, then I'm gonna ask the Commissioners if they have questions for you. Commissioner Pinter?
Yeah, thank you so much for coming up and describing your situation and the type of roadway you'd like to maintain. I happen to live on a private roadway myself in my neighborhood. It is quite a hassle. I'm not gonna lie. Every time I see one of those cracks, because ours is paved, like, oh, that's gonna come out of our HOA bill. And I just know that you guys probably have an appreciation for what you're taking on. Do you have any concerns or reservations about the process?
The process of
Of this change you're making?
Oh, not at all because we haven't had any help from the county anyway, ever. And we're just gonna keep maintaining it. In fact, a lot of people that come to visit us, they say, wow, this is better than most of the county roads. Even though it's gravel and that we we along with the neighbors take very good care of it.
I have a John Deere with a front and rear blade on. It's a big tractor and I I keep it graded and cut, keep the ditch just cut. Put my own sand and stuff on it to keep it so it don't get muddy.
And gravel?
And gravel.
So you're already doing all the steps anyway. Thank you.
Yeah, when we first, when we first moved there, sometimes we couldn't even get up the road. It was that clay slippery mud. And we would have to park at the bottom of our little hill there and just walk off. Because it was so bad. It was just like it was just a trail.
Thank you for that extra information.
Great, thank you. Other questions? Commissioner Odoricio, Henson? Go ahead.
Can we go back to the big map? So you guys are okay with this? According to, go ahead Jen, I'll ask, I'll do a follow up.
Sure, I I I might ask someone from Public Works, either Brian Staley or Ian Cortez, because we do take the Public Works recommendation very seriously when we're considering these. Not only do we review for the criteria of approval, but if Public Works wishes to relinquish county property right of way specifically, then then we are oftentimes supportive, provided it meets the criteria.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask this staff to come down and
Yes, Commissioner Odoricio, we are in support of this action. We feel that that with the inner with the agreement, the private maintenance agreement and with all seven parties that live a jo- a bu- buddingness, we are in support of it. Because we don't see ourselves again, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, that we don't plan on going easterly over the creek anytime soon. Without a significant investment from the county.
I I think that's fair and I appreciate that. I just want to get that on the record because a lot of times we don't go this way where we're vacating, you know, roads. That's rare and so I will note that there will probably, I'm looking into my crystal ball. And thank you very much. I I look at my crystal ball and I do wonder like at some point when a future or either property of a future property owner is gonna want to see the county covering the cost of the road, eventually there's gonna be development and those things, but I would hope that someone has a recording of this very meeting, this discussion, so then all the property owners who had this can put this into their sale of property in the future because we have lots of situations like this. And in fact, there's one by my house where a group of property owners asked for ownership of a portion of their their road and they have it and then they come back when the time comes for them to maintain it. I'll support this. I'll support the request. I just think it's important to note that when the time comes for a big expenditure in the future, there will be somebody on that that uses that road who will be complaining that the county isn't maintaining it. So I'd like to have signage out there that specifically says, this is a private road, not the county. And please feel free to look up this day on this case, if any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you Commissioner. Commissioner Henson?
Thank you. Yes, I I thank you Commissioner Odoricio for voicing some of of my my thoughts on this as well, that it's kind of it goes back and forth. And I I hear what you say that you, you know, you built the road and that that you have been maintaining it. Because but just, I I really also think that a day will come in the future when when this, what being asked for today will be will want to be put in reverse and, you know, and that's part of the nature of development and growth and and time just marching on here in our county. But I do, I'm sorry to ask you, I know you went and sat down. I do have a couple of questions for the applicants because it seems to me this request is pretty much based on secure, uh, security concerns. So I just wanted to ask you a couple of questions about about that if you could come back down, please. I'm sorry, I didn't know you were gonna go sit down again. So i- if we if we approve this vacation, then I'm assuming you're gonna put a gate up or something, you're you're planning to increase security. Have you already, do you already have signs posted about private property? I'm just curious if you can tell us what what you've done already, because it sounds like your security concerns are really top of mind and is feeling significant.
The county has put up dead end signs and all that, but no one pays attention to it, never have.
Regarding, are these are most people, do you feel people are accessing your property? Are they driving onto your street or are they walking? I mean, I you're seen but pretty far distance from even the town of Bennett. So are people just arriving on foot or are they mostly driving onto your property? Driving onto the road, okay. And so do you feel that be that you are, I don't know if your properties are fat, they're huge property, they're very like large. I mean, I live in, I live in the suburbs, so thirty acres sounds pretty big to me. So you feel that this, if the road were vacated and that you were able to put up, you know, a gate or something with a lockbox, that that is going to address the majority of your security concerns?
Yep, everybody will have openers, the clickers in your car.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I'm I'm inclined to support this as well. I do just, I just want to Commissioner Odoricio's point again, for everybody, please make sure this is all documented because the time could come in the future where we could see a change here, but I will support today. So thank you for being here, appreciate and thank you for answering our questions.
Thank you.
Other questions? I do have a question. Thank you so much for being present. What have you approached Bennett Fire? So Bennett Fire has not, to my understanding, provided a comment. Usually all of our public safety would provide comment, utilities would provide comment. We have a a standard list that we send out for most of the land use cases. So have you been in contact with Bennett Fire or?
Oh, yes, we have been. In fact, they told us, they're the ones that told us where to go to purchase the lockbox thing. And they told us where to place it on their on their right side because the driver doesn't get out to o- open it's the
That way they have access to it whenever they need it or ambulance or
And they didn't seem to have a problem with it. They thought that was, that was good. And we've also spoken with the people at Core. They were, they were fine.
Supportive with that also.
Yeah.
Okay, I you, this is just my suggestion as well, and we may make a condition of it, is the access for the sheriff's office. Because if there is an emergency, you do need support out there. The sheriff will need to have access. And then a vacation, I would also ask that a remote, it sounds like it's a remote, be provided to or be in contact with Adams County because we, it doesn't relieve the property conditions. I'm sure all of you, it sounds like you've been neighbors for a very, very long time. But as time happens, and we're gonna see tremendous amount of growth, is that these would also have to meet. All the properties would still meet the conditions of the county regulations. So this vacation doesn't relieve any of that portion. So I'd ask for those two remotes. Primarily to the sheriff's office or communication with the sheriff's office that they have some access or contact, a contact name would also be great in either instance. But I would ask that a remote be provided to the sheriff's office or some similar lockbox situation. Right, okay, thank you. Anything else? On a side note, the Veterans Memorial is a ten minute drive from here. So if you have time, it's very, it's very, very close. Yeah. And it's beautiful. So, all right, any additional questions from the board? Not seeing any. So thank you so much. You can take your seats now.
I just have a question. I had mentioned it and then Commissioner Odoricio, this is a question for staff, if that's all right, Chair? And Commissioner Odoricio had picked it up. I do live on a private road and it is within the city limits of Westminster. So there's the Westminster sign and there's a little yellow sign that says private road right on that. What kind of signage? I couldn't find it in a quick scan of the packet. Will be available, documented so that folks understand what's happening when they come up to this roadway?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. There was no, there was no discussion related to having a a sign stating that it will be a private driveway, but that's certainly something that we can try to add as a condition for the, so the applicant has that at the entrance of the of E sixty-four.
That's something that I think would be good notice to the public. And so to the point about emergency vehicle response, I love that these individuals at this moment have a good relationship with the fire department, but and you do intend to live here, I understand from your commentary, a really long time. But just sort of something so that there is a comment about emergen- like an emergency access number or something like that. So I don't know if that is gonna take a minute. I think some kind of signage. I'm literally only referencing what is in front of my home on my street. But I'm curious if there's a recommendation on some kind of private road signage.
Maybe after public comment, you can give us a break and we can rendezvous with our Public Works partners and decide what might be most appropriate.
Great, sounds good. Okay. So I'm gonna ask if there's anyone here from the public that would like to talk to this request, this land use hearing. You didn't have to sign up. Yes, please come down to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Julie Miklis. I'm the Senior Land Manager for Mark Marietta. My office is located eighteen hundred North Taft Hill Road in Fort Collins. When we got the revised staff report yesterday, we pulled a couple of documents that I'd like to submit for the record. I don't know who I give those to. And if we got a little time at the end, I I can explain what I provided for you. I had my own presentation prepared, but I got comments from legal counsel fifteen minutes ago, so I have to just say this first. This vacation would eliminate a valuable access point to our property. Staff has stated that our CUP does not allow access via sixty-fourth Avenue. And while this is true, our C R, CUP will eventually expire. The property will transition to a new use and the loss of the secondary ass- assess, access will be significant. We granted a access easement to the Lincolns, the adjacent landowners, to give them access to sixty-fourth Avenue across our property. The vacation would deprive them of access as well and the proposed easement does not take that into account. The county has not analyzed how title will vest to the adjacent property owners following a vacation. At least some portion of sixty-fourth Avenue would likely go to Mark Marietta. Ultimately, we want to work with our neighbors, but the vacation eliminates a valuable access point for us and for the Lincolns. Even if we can't access it right now. We're surprised that the county would consider a vacation. We're not all of the adjacent landowner owners consent to it. And would ask that you deny the current request to that so that we can identify a resolution that works for everyone. The documents that I handed to you, if you'll give me a few minutes, I can go through and explain what I've got there. The first one that has the map on the front of it, this is the property that we own. It is at the end of sixty-fourth Avenue. They mentioned seven residents, but we are also adjacent to sixty-fourth Avenue. The next page is a blow up of that. The following page is the map that the applicant submitted and the blue outline is the property that we own. And I just want to draw to attention, staff was saying that it was the sixty-fourth went to the creek and it does not, there's about nine hundred and seventy feet that we own before it gets to the creek. The following page is the deed for that strip of land that the previous landowner submitted or gave to David Lincoln when he purchased the property and started the mine. And then the following document is the access easement that Henderson aggregates conveyed back to him so he could access through the property on the south end. And I think that's the last thing for that one. And then staff had said we didn't have any permission for an emergency easement. And the second document is what was submitted as part of our application for the mine in February of twenty twenty. That includes, I didn't put everything in here. We did a roadway dedication at seventy-second and a wildlife easement and then the easement for the access.
So you're at time, but I will allow you to talk about what the remainder of the documents are.
Okay.
Okay.
And so the last page there shows that stretch of land. So at the end of this road that's shown on this map there is our property. And then on the other side of the creek is David Lincoln. That also has access by sixty-fourth. Per easement with us. And we're not opposed to granting this vacation. We just want to be a party to it, a party to the agreement. So that when we come back for a continuance of our zoning, that the fire department doesn't bring back up that we never dedicated the emergency access or that they have an issue with our operations.
Okay, thank you so much for your comments. Chair, okay, yes, hang on one second. Okay, so I have Commissioner Odoricio. The process is the applicant responds if requested. So I have Commissioner Odoricio at first and then Pinter?
Let me know if I get this right. You are that property between what's on the screen now, between Kiowa Creek and the dot.
Yeah.
And then the property to the right or the east also has an access agreement with you to cross your property from what is currently the red dotted line into their property to the east of you.
Correct.
So we now have two property owners that have some sort of dependent use of that red dotted line, which is currently today a public road.
Right, we're currently not using it, but the documents are out there. Our main access is to the north to seventy-second for our mine. But that access is an emergency access for the fire department.
Sixty-fourth is an emergency access for both your property and the property to the east. Got it. And you're okay with this as long as it doesn't interfere with your future permit to continue or to use your current property.
Right, and we submitted documents to the neighbors to have us added to the access easement, but we never got any response from them on that. If we were added to their agreement, we would be fine, us and David, we would be fine with it being vacated as long as we were able to access that. It being vacated as long as we were able to access that road also.
Got it. And so I guess my question, just, I'm, I'm kinda clarifying. Like, uh, was be that you. You and the property owner to the east would be okay to support this as long as you're also parties. That benefit from the, what would soon be a private access agreement along the red dotted line.
I have not spoken with David Lincoln. He was one of them that was hit pretty hard with the tornado that went through on Sunday. But we did, our predecessors did an agreement for him to access our property. We don't want him coming back on us saying. You never, you know, we don't have our access anymore. That it would then be put on us because sixty-fourth avenue is no longer there.
Got it, okay.
So I'm, I'm requesting we both would be added. I don't know if he wants to be added or not, so.
But I mean, if, yeah, okay, I, uh. Wow, I, I'm gonna wait and see how this plays out with some questions, or I'm gonna ask for an executive session, but I'm not doing that yet.
Um, Commissioner Odoricio, I was gonna make a direct ask to our chair for a continuance for. It was my understanding in the original presentation from the applicant and staff that all property owners were gonna be included. In, um, the road access discussion. Um, and, um, I, it feels like there is. Some information that might not be the case. And so either an executive session or continuances or both is my request at this time. So Chair, I'll let you decide what we do next.
Yes, they see staff, go ahead, Jen.
Um, if, if it's all right, I could provide some clarifying information. So, uh, the property, uh, owned by David Lincoln actually does have direct access onto Yule Road. Um, there is a sliver and it's, it's not on this map, but, um, it does show up on RGIS maps. That there is a sliver of road that connects his larger property to Yule Road. So he does have alternative access. He is not an adjacent property owner. It doesn't appear that they actually have existing, existing access over Kiowa Creek is what I can tell. Um, so whenever we evaluate applications such as a roadway vacation, we ensure that there, there are no properties being. Uh, there's no islands being created of, of properties without access to a public roadway. Um, so in this case, there actually, there aren't any. Um, the mine property does have access on two seventy-second avenue. That is the exclusive approved access by both the county permit and the state permit. Um, there is no mention in the application that there would be access onto sixty-fourth avenue. The easements that are provided, I believe, I was not provided a, a copy of the exhibits, but none of those easements are actually recorded. Um, maybe with the exception of the one from Dave Lincoln, but the, the easements that were submitted as part of the application. For their mine permit to the county were not recorded easements. Um, so. Uh, there, there are, there is access to all of the properties in question. Either via this road maintenance agreement for the properties adjacent to the subject roadway or the mine. That has direct access onto seventy-second avenue and the David Lincoln property that has access onto Yule Road.
Great, thank you for that, Jen. Um, so the request that the. The active request is that the board enter into an executive session. Or and or, uh, do a continuance of this matter. So I think we should start with the executive session first. That I do have some questions for the attorney that would, I think, clarify for me. Uh, Commissioner Odoricio.
I, I, I'm okay with that. I mean, I'd be okay with a continuance and that just, uh, also. It's up to you. Uh, you prefer an executive session?
It, it's up to the board. I, I think that there's enough questions for both, for executive session and or a continuance.
I moved to going to an executive session.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, yes, so. We'd like to have more information. Let us take this vote and then I'll address, uh, the public comment section. So let's go ahead and take the vote.
And go ahead. That would be pursuant to Colorado revised statute twenty-four six four oh two four B for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding. The pending land use case.
And, and if I might, uh, amend my motion would be to have an executive session after the public comment period.
I support that.
Okay, let's go ahead and, can we go ahead and vote?
Yes.
Okay, and then we'll go back to public comment.
Commissioner Odoricio. Commissioner Malika.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Commissioner Pinter.
Yes.
Commissioner Baca.
Yes. So after, we're gonna go back up to public comment, um. The request that there's additional residents that are. Relevant to, it's relevant to hear their testimony as well under public comments. So if we can have, or it's actually applicants. Anyway, um, it's fine. So if you'd like to come down, state your name and address for the record and. I see one person come up. Were there others that wanted to speak? Okay. I, I need to hear everyone one at a time, but those that would like to speak, please come down. Um, so we'll start with. Go ahead and start with you, Gail, and then name and address for the record and.
Hi, my name's Gail Palon and I live at the end of sixty-four where the road stops. And our property backs up to Martin Marietta's property. And the road stops, it doesn't go all the way to the creek bottom. Okay, and if you were to keep going, you're going to fall in a gravel pit. So, and I guess my concern was, first of all, all the track of traffic we've had on our road. And people in our driveways going through our stuff. I went out of my house one day and there was a guy in my garage. And which I proceeded to follow him back out. And I guess my thing with Martin Marietta was. They told us in case of an emergency, which we, we had, Debbie had them in her home. We met with them and we had no problem with that whatsoever. And told them, of course, we would give them access code for them. Um, but two weeks ago on a Friday, they had, their mechanic couldn't get in. Office seventy-second and he came up and we let him drive all the way through our property in the back. And my husband took down a part of the fence, so their mechanic could get in there and fix something. It's though, it's not like we're neighborly, not neighborly. Um, hours of operation, seven to three thirty, not the case. We've never complained to the county. I don't think anybody's ever received a complaint. Um, we've tried to be neighborly, the dust, um, the fence when Ben Fry owned it. He took down part of the fence. It's not a big deal. Um. What else? Oh, the berms. We had asked in the very beginning, and I don't know, Brian, if you were involved then. Um, just don't block our view. We don't have a problem. And we've asked Martin Marietta to take the big berms down and they haven't. And, um. The grade. So the natural resource before they, the gravel pit, it drained, everything drained to the creek bottom. To Kiowa Creek and. They've got it now up along our fence line that drains back in on our septic. We've asked and nothing's been done. So. There you have it. But that's really. We, our neighbor, one neighbor was hit by the tornado on Sunday. Our next door neighbor west of us and fire department, ambulance, police, nobody had a problem getting up the road. I think the neighbors have done a great job maintaining it all these years. I don't, I've never seen a county truck on the road ever in thirty years. So, and that's basically it.
Okay.
Thank you, county commissioners, for letting us speak before you went off to do your side. Um, I'm Shawna DuBois, but I live at sixty-four twenty, which is the eight, right on that A three part. Um, it was my understanding based on the lawyer we hired to do the easement that the county doesn't actually own the whole five acres of the road. Because our house does not ever show that we gave the county a part of our property on that road. Um, so. I, that's partly why, you know, we want to have a private road because we do have a bunch of strangers coming there. We had some woman left off near our road and we found her in our, in front of our garage sleeping overnight, some strange person. And we've also had people coming through our property looking for things. I wanted to point out that. The Martin Marietta property, there is no way to access that currently on sixty-fourth without having to go to either Wayne and Gail's property. Or Rick and Tara's property and asking them to take down their fence. Because the, the road that was built by the neighborhood and has been maintained by the neighborhood ends at their two entrances to their driveway. So even though Martin Marietta may have what you would call to the creek. There is currently no way for them to drive without asking one of those two neighbors to take down their fence to let a vehicle through there. And as Gail said before, they did have an emergency, you know, a couple of times over the last few years where. They, they did take down their fence when they needed to access, cause we had a fire in the creek. And so that was the only way that the fire department could get down there. Um, and then, let me just see, sorry, if I have any other notes here. Um, we've lived in our place twenty-one years and the only time that Adams County has been on our road was after we requested. That we put up a gate, they put a dead end sign. Prior to that, C dot put up a dead end sign on our street road. Um, and that's been there for like fifteen years and like the other neighbors had said, it doesn't deter anyone from driving up our road to, you know. Look around. And so, uh, you know, in future. If there's access to Yule Road, which is the next main street, there is, um, access at fifty-six, then we're at sixty-fourth. And because we're all thirty-five plus acre lots, I mean, you guys would have to completely rezone that area in order for. It to be a problem as far as having a private road versus a county maintained road, cause. Like one of the men said, it would be a significant cost to do a second bridge only two miles up the road. Just so, and the, the property that is east of us is all privately owned as well. So then those people would have to, you know. Release, relinquish part of their property to make that happen as well. Alright, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good morning. If you can state your name and address for the record.
My name is Sandy Johnson. My girl is my sister. I'm at five hundred fifty E sixty-fourth. I just have a quick comment. There are seven homes. There are twelve, um, adults living there. Seven of us, as you can probably guess, are firmly senior citizens. And the ones that aren't, aren't that far behind us and safety is a big issue for us on that road. We get a lot of traffic that we don't even recognize. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good morning. If you can state your name and address for the record.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Rick Bose. I'm at fifty, five zero one eight zero E sixty-fourth. I'm actually the end of the guy at the end of the road. Um, I feel like I'm a senior citizen by mileage if nothing else, so, you know. Um, I'm probably the least qualified to talk here because I'm the last guy to move into the neighborhood. Um, but I can tell you we're a very close neighborhood. You mentioned the tornadoes. Um, Sunday, everybody that you see here and everybody else that lives on the street, we're all together helping. Take care of things. We all had damage. We all had problems. Um, Martin Marietta was not there. Um, and I don't know that they would be in the future. There's never been access since I've been there, two sixty-fourth. They do have access. Um, seventy-second, I believe, and Yule Road. So I don't see the purpose in creating access now. Which just creates more truck traffic and incoming traffic that is hard to keep track of when nobody's maintaining the road but us. And that's all I've got, so.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good morning. If you can please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Wayne Palone. I'm a little hard of hearing, so if I don't respond to you. Uh, what I wanna hit mainly on is my wife, uh, explained some of the drainage problems. That we have now, three years ago during the big storms that you guys are still trying to patch up. They had washouts in, uh, on the side. I'm the longest person on the, on their property going north to south. And the whole side of the property where they had put a road up there is above grade. Uh, the main portion of the property drains severely down in that angle. And they have berms that are over six feet high. Which would cause severe flooding on my property and damage to their, their drainage. And that's our biggest concern. My other concern is that they want an easement from us. To give them some of our property, but they won't let us step a foot on their property. They, every time I meet with them, I have to meet them at the fence and we talk across the fence. And there's no communications with them. I've tried, uh, they, every time I notify them about the berms. And the drainage, they go, well, we've got a contractor coming in to resolve all these issues. But they didn't. All they did was put bigger berms up. They, they graded the bottom of the pit out, but they did nothing for the rest of the property. And that's my concern. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else that'd like to speak as an applicant or under public comment? I think everyone that wanted to speak did speak, everyone else's staff. Okay, so at this time, let's go ahead and take a recess. The, uh, time is eleven forty-six. Let's take a recess until, oh, we'll do twenty minutes, twelve oh five. And then we'll come back and reconvene the meeting at that time. So we're gonna step into executive session. Great, thank you, Heidi. Alright, the time is twelve oh eight. We're gonna go ahead and reconvene uh, the land use hearings in the last case of the day. Okay, Jed, do you have an update for us?
I apologize. I wasn't listening to what you were saying. So are you asking for an update for a date?
An update for a continuance?
Okay, that's what I'm prepared to answer. Um, uh, July eighth um, would be the date that's available for the applicants, if that's uh, amount of all for you all.
Great. Okay, so I just need a motion. Anything else Heidi besides a motion for the continuance?
No, I think that's perfect.
Okay. I'll have it to make the motion chair. Um, I move to continue V A C twenty twenty-four dash two. Tausic Fin Silver, East eighty-fourth Avenue, vacation to a date certain July eighth. Did I get that right? July eighth.
Second.
And the motion to continue passes five to zero. Okay, so with no additional items on our agenda this morning, we are adjourned at twelve ten AM, PM.